Well, call the meeting to order. Thank you and welcome to the December 8th. Planning Board Meeting for the Town of Wakefield. Like to call this meeting to order and just want to take a quick roll call. Susan, I see you're there. Excellent. Thank you. And Matt Lowry. There.
Yeah, I'm here.
And. Bill Diamore.
I'm here.
Okay. Yeah, let's see. Joanne Schooler.
Here.
And Megan Menasali.
Here.
We also have with us tonight Erin Kokinda. If you don't know, which I think you might know, Erin is our. Community and Economic Development Director. Is that the correct title?
Yes.
Okay. And if you could, can you see the page here? Okay, so this is Erin's page. It's a new page on our town website and I just wanted to share this with you. It's under Departments and Community and Economic Development. And there's a lot of information here and this is also, you can see Erin's information and her phone number here. So email if you need to get ahold of her.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm here. You know, always feel free to reach out. That's my, all my contact information. I'm thrilled to be here.
I guess we might as well just talk about it really quick now. Erin and I met with Steve Mayo. A week and a half ago or so, just to discuss what the town planner did and what Erin could do to help us as a planning board. And we also went to lunch on Monday. That was yesterday. And got to know each other a little bit more and discuss about what, what can really happen. And really exciting if, if you really want to know the 10 minute presentation. On everything Erin's been doing the last three weeks, right, three weeks? And what she's planning to do. Watch the recording of last night's. Town Council Meeting, which you should find on the website or on WCAT. It was really good. It was close to the beginning, maybe about 10 minutes in or so. And it's really worth watching because she does have some visuals to explain. What she's been working on and all the different committees and organizations that she was involved with in her past job. And now that she's making those connections again for the, for our town. So it's really, I'm super excited.
Well, thanks for having me today and you know, I like, like I've said to you. I'm just trying to meet everyone, kind of figure out, you know, what, where I can help as much as I can to help the town succeed. So thanks for having me.
You're welcome. And Erin is going to do something. She does have a deadline for the end of this year for us. To put together a list of the things that she really wants to do to help our board. So that's something that will work out with Susan as well as our clerk to figure out how all that goes in. And we do have like one really big idea that I'm excited about is having some type of a portal. Where all of the PDFs and documents and everything come into for all the town boards. And we can all go up and look at them and visual to review them and to say yes, received. So that's something that isn't going to happen right away, but it's something that we're researching to look and Erin has some ideas on that too.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
You're welcome. The reason I was bringing up this page too, is you can see here on the left, the zoning resources are now here. So if you didn't have links to the town planner page that went to the zoning resources. You'll find that these will all be here, the zoning bylaws, the subdivision rules and regulations. And even more importantly, the report and study archive, which I go to a lot. The report and study archive has the 2003 housing plan. The 2004 economic development plan, the open space recreation plan, which is, that's the first stuff I got to work on for the board. And. Let's see, the housing production plan is a really good one to look at. Then the market assessment that we did with. Fine Point and Peg Behringer. The cultural, so all the way down this whole list, if you remember the presentation that. Paul Reviss put together with the Northeastern Graduate Students, that was really interesting to see what they did with the common and all. So a lot of this is here. So that's where it all lives now. So that's the tour. Let me go back to. Our agenda for this evening and a notice of the meeting, as you know, we've been doing since. Eight, March, April. Via Zoom, so consistent with the government, governor's orders, the open meeting. Law and banning, banning gatherings more than 10 people. So we're going to be working at this capacity until any of that changes. Let's see. The approval of minutes, November 17th, 2020. Did you all have a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Megan, Bill, Joanne, Matt. Okay. Does anybody have any comments or questions? I did find one typo. It's not a big deal. It's just one word that was repeated twice in there. Doesn't change the meaning of them. I might've even said the word twice in a row. So it's, maybe it's okay. Maybe we want to entertain a vote to accept.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the November 17th, 2020 regular planning board minutes as, as presented.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor of accepting the meeting minutes? Hi, Megan.
Hi.
Excellent. Thank you, Susan, for putting those together. So the agenda this evening, item number three is approval not required in our plan for 500 Main Street. Item number four, a lowest of subdivision mile our plan endorsement. Item number five, review planning board budget. And item six, items not anticipated by the chair. So if we, Attorney McGrail, if you. Let me stop sharing the screen and make sure the sharing is set up for multiple participants. And if you want to go ahead and present the A and R, that would be awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, for the record, Attorney Brian McGrail. I am representing MBAR Wakefield LLC. With an approval not required plan that we are requesting endorsement by the board. I want to thank Board Member Lowry for. Kind of shepherding this through because there were some issues on earlier versions and thank you, Matt, for your patient, patience in guidance. I'm going to bring that up and. There it is. So the A and R plan deals with this property. It's 500 Main Street. It's the location of the former Napa. Auto parts store. And all's we're doing at this point is we are dividing it into two lots. Which will be lot one. Of 13,000 square feet, lot two, which is about 11,000 square feet. I can pull that up a little bit. And. To be quiet, this is in the business zoning district and the required frontage is 40 feet. So it easily meets the, each lot easily meets our requirement more than double, 96 on lot one. In 106 on lot two. Happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Um.
Thank you, Brian. I'm sorry, go ahead, Joanne.
I'm not exactly familiar with the Napa Auto Parts. Can you help familiarize me with?
I can, I can, Joanne. Hang on a second. Let me try to do that.
And why Brian's bringing that up, I know the proposed bike path will be running right behind this. From across from the Galvin School. So that's just to put it into perspective of where it sits.
Okay, so it's closer to the center from the Galvin School, a little.
Yeah.
It's across from the new field. So it's not as far up as the Galvin, as the Americal, but it's right across from the field.
Right.
Yeah, hang on a second.
Well, the field is on the same side as the Galvin though, right?
Yeah, so this is directly across Main Street from it.
Oh, it's not on the same side as.
No, it's like Bennett Street, Richardson Street, and then.
Yeah. Here you go, Joanne. Does this help?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think I know.
So. This is a middle school. It's right across the street.
Okay. It's like kind of past where the old Stylecraft was.
Yeah, Stylecraft, Joanne, is right, is right. Is right here.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I still have a $50 gift, gift certificate for Stylecraft, if anybody wants it.
That and a cup of coffee, right?
You know, maybe you should use it, see if you can use it at Sweet Bay now.
Yeah. That's right.
So Brian, I have a question, not that I need to know exactly what his plan there, if anything's planned, but. Say someone wanted to put a couple of housing units in, is that allowed in business zone?
It is, Matt. Let me see, let me just double check. I know a two family is, we're just looking right now. Yes, single family homes are allowed in the business district.
So someone could put a duplex in there or something, sort of like general residence zone, correct?
They could.
Okay.
And that, and just so you know, I mean, as you know, I try to be as transparent as I can. That's not the plan. His plan is to, is to continue, is complaining, his plan is for commercial. And at this point with no residential component. So I think, I think the town will be very happy with what he plans to do with these properties.
Thank you.
And that's encouraging, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
So, um, is, what do we, what do we have to approve? Just that it's two lots or what is the part that's. Requiring? The meeting?
Well, Joanne, for us, we need to, as a board, we can approve this. We can endorse it. Approval not required plan, as long as this is on, it is on a main street, a street that. Is accessible to the lots without having to make another road or a private way into. For example, like a subdivision. This doesn't go by the subdivision rules. It goes by the approval not required rules. So there's nothing we can really do if it meets the requirements. And as Attorney McGrail mentioned, it meets the footage of the frontage. Of 40 feet. And there's, there's really nothing else. There was. Attorney McGrail mentioned that Matt Lowry helped with the plan. When the plan was first sent to us. Matt reviewed the plan for the requirements that as a board we have laid out, meaning it needs to show the existing buildings. Dimensions to, dimensions of the, the, the site. The lot lines and to the closest other streets and all the information that's there. And I know, Matt, I don't know if you want to speak more to that.
Well, since I worked kind of extensively on revising our A and R rules and regulations, I. I kind of just went through our rules and regs and make sure that the plan complies with everything. As, as long as a plan complies with, with our rules and regulations and the minimum. Requirements. Outlined by statute and Massachusetts General Law, we have no choice but to endorse it. So. The only, the only. The only time we could really reject this or not actually accept it is if it did not meet our rules and regulations. So. As a courtesy, I try to go through and just take a quick look to make sure that. When it's presented to the, to the board that. We can't accept it and then vote on it to endorse it or not. So. The way, the way I feel about it, if a plan does not meet our rules and regulations, we don't have to accept it. So therefore. There's no action taken on it. If we do start, if we do accept a plan for review. We. In some, there are some questions on it. We do have a timeframe of 21 days to act on it, but. If we do not act within 21 days, there's automatic approval. So. I make sure that either it's accepted. By the board to be reviewed or not. So at least, I mean, I'm not doing that on behalf of the board. I do that on behalf of myself. So.
Thank you, Matt. Joanne, does that help with any questions, clarifications?
Um, yeah, that's interesting. Um, I guess just out of curiosity, there's some empty land there now, I think. Next to Napa, are they planning to build a new building in addition to something to replace what, what's there now?
Attorney McGrail, is that something you can respond to?
Because I think. Share what I can. So the plan is, it will, his plan at this point is to put one. Retail slash service establishment type operation here. And then another one here. At some point, I think, I think his plan is to develop this one first and then this one afterwards.
Yeah, I think, yeah, isn't that one on the left, a parking lot now?
That?
One of them, one of those is.
Yeah, I think it is. I think there's a lot of parking here, Joanne. And then I think there's some over here too. There's a building here now. I'm, see the building? That's, that's kind of like, there's an auto, there's an old auto repair garage back here. And this building here was where the Napa was. Right up on Main Street.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to see if, um, any other comments from the board. I just wanted to see if there were any comments from the public. Is there anybody attending the meeting from the public that would like to have any, do they have any comments or questions? If you do, you can raise your hand, your blue little hand on the participants, or you can unmute and, and speak. If you do speak, please state your name and your address. Excellent. Well, thank you. Let me see. I'm having a little problem with the Zoom controls right now. All right, I'll fix it. Matt, would you like to make a motion to endorse this plan?
Yes, so. I'll make a motion to endorse the. Plan of land entitled, the plan of land of 500 Main Street in Wakefield, Mass. Prepared by PJF and Associates. Dated November 12th, 2020, last revised December 7th, 2020.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks. Sorry, Bill, I had to mute you earlier. You had a little background noise.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. All in favor of endorsing this plan?
Hi.
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 Joanne, Megan, Bill, Matt. Okay, so that's. Unanimous.
To Chair, I also have the application and filing fee, which I will. I can get to Susan. Tomorrow, but the board, I think, needs to authorize you to sign the application as, as a receipt, which is required.
Well, do we want to do that or do you need all of us to sign?
On this one, I'm fine with you, as long as you're authorized.
Well, as long as it's fine with the board.
Oh, yeah, of course.
Well, we're going to, the plan's got to be signed by everyone also, correct? So.
Yeah, you want to do the application at the same time, Matt?
Yeah, why don't we just send the application and the plan around and we'll all make sure we.
Okay.
Right. And Brian, if that works out better.
Yeah, that's fine.
Want to coordinate it, if it, if it comes to my house first, I could do the drop off, or if you want to chauffeur it around, however.
Whatever, whatever's more convenient for the board, we can, we can help. So.
I think we've done it both ways now, and I do believe we have some other drawings to sign. I don't know if you want to coordinate it as one effort.
Yeah, I think. We can do that. I think we can do that.
When will you have them all available in a package?
I would say, I would definitely this week. Hopefully, I would say tomorrow, Thursday at the latest.
Okay, tomorrow afternoon I am available. Thursday, I'm in Boston. Friday, I'm back here in Wakefield. So.
Yeah, because I have, I have the Wildwood plans that still need to be signed that you guys already approved. So I'm going to, I'll send a bunch of stuff around.
Okay.
So I'll, 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 I'll do my best to get tomorrow. And if I get it to you Thursday, just whenever you can circulate it, it's fine.
Right, okay. Or it could start with someone else on Thursday.
I'm sorry?
It could start with another board member on Thursday too, if that, that works.
I could just leave him on Matt's porch. So I think what I'm going to have is, I'm going to have the. The. Mr. Chair, the only thing you have to sign is you've got to sign the Osipie surety that's come back from the bank. That was approved by town council.
I could do that tomorrow if you want me to swing by your office.
That would be great because I know they want to get going.
Yep, send me an email with the time or feel free to, yeah, just get that to me and I can. Head over and sign it.
Thank you. And then the, I have the Wildwood plans. And then this plan and then this application. And then also if you agree that you're going to endorse the. Lovess plans, we can, we can do those at the same time too.
Well, that's a good lead into our, I believe, our next. It's not they.
Could I, could I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
Could you do a checklist? When you send that along, just so, I know we're going to have multiple plans here, just so we know that we're signing, you know, X number of A and Rs, X number of. Of subdivision plans, just, just so everyone's clear on what they need to do.
We, I could do that, like checking off each one that it's been done.
Yeah, checking off that you need to sign off three plans and maybe each person just checks off as we pass it along. So.
That'd be great.
Checklist for not only ourselves, but for you.
Good idea. Thank you.
All right, that's perfect. Thank you, Matt. Brian, I took the screen back.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
No, it's all right. I think you can all see the agenda, correct? The agenda's up now?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So item number four, a lowest of subdivision mile our plane endorsement.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we're just requesting that, that, that this plan be endorsed. We have had. Let me just see what I can find here. The big thing on this is that the I and I has been paid. And. I think. Could be with me for one second. Pretty sure I can bring up a receipt for that. There you go. Can you see that?
We can see, I can see your message and we can see the JPG, but it's not open.
Oh. Hold on. How about now?
Yes.
Great.
To Mr. Renault, town engineer. Enclosed, please find a check in the amount of $5,400 in payment for the inflow and infiltration fee required. Okay.
Correct. I mean, that's, you know, you guys want, obviously want to make sure that that's been paid.
Yep.
It has, and. I've been working with Bill Renault, and then the other part is. We went over, I had a conference call with him and John Oren on his checklist items, which is the main, the, one of which is the SWIP plan. And we went, we went over everything, just be with me.
And I believe I received.
Oh, did he copy you on that, Mr. Chair?
I believe he did just.
Oh, he did. I see that. Great.
It was. Recent.
Yeah. I talked to him this morning.
Right, it was that.
Can you see that email?
Yeah, yeah.
Right. So this is from Joe Renault, is discussing the engineering division, reviewing the proof of this draft SWIP. With the application, we have no issues with the Mylar endorsement. He's actually been up to the site and they had meetings with. The owner, Hayes Engineering and with the contractor, and he said he's very pleased where we are. They already have, they already have the environmental consultant onboard, everything that's required. And Matt, these plans. As with Wildwood, you know, they have to go, they, they have to go through the registered land process, which is. Kind of a. Pain in the neck, for lack of a better term. So these plans will not get recorded right away. They're going to have to. They're going to have to go into the land court and be approved that way.
Okay, and just, just for the rest of the board, if you're not familiar, the SWIP. Is a stormwater pollution prevention plan. It's super specific to each site and it's. Done by an engineer and it's, it's a report. Usually they're pretty thick. So it's what could cause like water pollution. And if there's any details that the. Development will take in to help mitigate that. So that, just in a nutshell, that's what the SWIP is.
And I will work with town council on the, on the surety covenant to form the covenant on this, and we will make sure that the plans don't get recorded until that's with it.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask. How, how do we make sure they're recorded and the timing is right? Is that something that you'll take care of?
Yeah, I will. And, and Matt will know this. It's just a little bit awkward with the land court because. Because you know what, these, we've already sent our plans in for pre-review with them.
Right.
And then they may comment. And then once they're all set, they're going to want the Mylaws. I think that's the way it works, right, Matt? Don't you send the Mylaws into the land court?
Yeah, so, I mean, we're. We're approving, we approve the subdivision, we sign the Mylaws. This needs to go before a judge who actually has to decree that this goes forward. So. Until the applicant meets all of their drafting and. And engineering, survey engineering standards, this does not become. A subdivision until a judge actually decrees it since this land court. So. We've, we've done everything to get past our. Our regulatory process approvals, but now it's into the court system for their approvals. Which is going to take a while.
Yeah, and as I go through the process, the covenants are kind of unique with this because, you know, normally we can just take the plans over. And record them with the plans, but, but as Matt just said, with land courts, a little bit different. So. What I'll do, Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, is I'll just, I'll just correspond with town council on this to make sure it gets done right. And I'll copy you on that process. You muted.
Thank you. That's perfect. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, the. Stormwater protection plan, the SWPPP. Does that involve like the town adding sewer pipes and stuff?
It could. Well, Brian could speak to it and Matt could as well, but in some cases, the town. Already has the sewer in place. It's about the new development meeting. The sewer and where does it meet? Are any other catch basins required? Are there any other type of drainage? Ponds or below ground chambers required for filtration or anything like that?
So they already determined if there is?
Yes, and it's something that's engineered and then the town engineer reviews to make sure it's in order. And I don't know, Brian, does it also go to DPW?
Yeah, it goes to, I mean, really, yeah. And, and you know, as you said, more drainage might be needed, but, but it's really. At the end of the day, it's, it's really for construction purposes that, that there's a. There's a stormwater protection plan during construction mainly that is, as the subdivision's built that. You know, when it rains and stuff, that there won't be runoff outside of the subdivision. During construction. And as Bill said, sometimes that you need to put temporary drainage in, et cetera. And that's all reviewed by. This was prepared by Hayes Engineering and that's reviewed by the engineering department to make sure they're satisfied that it will address all those concerns. And they have reviewed this and have approved it.
Does the town need to do stuff or do they do that when they develop the property?
The developer pays for everything and does it all.
Good questions. Any other questions or comments?
Well. I don't recall which of the board members. I don't recall which of the board members voted on this. But we just need to make sure, and Brian, you're gonna need to have this in your checklist of there, I think there are some board members that will not be endorsing these plans because they did not vote on this. I believe, because this has been going on since before the before Joanne and Megan were on the board, so.
Yep, another good point, Matt.
Make sure that they do not sign these plans, but they have to sign other plans, so that's why I'm just
Yep.
You should have this checklist, so.
Got it. Good, very good point. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Thanks, Matt. So we'll just wait to hear from you.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'll send you an email, Mr. Chairman, let you know where we're gonna start. I'll try to, I'll try to get all this stuff. It might be, I've got a mediation all day tomorrow, so I don't know if I'm gonna be able to do it until Thursday. And if I do it, start it Thursday, I might just drop them on Matt's porch and go from there. And then he can get Bill and then Matt can call me when they're done, and then we can go from there. I can pick them up from him, we'll have two done and go from there.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Is that okay?
Yep. So waiting to hear from you before moving forward with any anything that we need to sign or okay.
And you'll have it at the latest by Thursday to get it going.
Yep, and I'll be waiting to hear from you for Osipee for tomorrow.
Great. Yeah. Yep, there's one, what 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 I'm gonna, the one plan you might be missing, because I've got to orchestrate this, and I won't include it if I don't have it yet. Is, and if you go back and you know it, you'll remember this, that on Wildwood, you have not got the check for the INI on that.
Okay.
So I, I'm gonna try, I I think that's been done. It was hopefully done today, and but if that hasn't been done, that plan, I will not give it to you because, you know, it shouldn't be signed until you have that INI money.
All right. Thank you for keeping track of that.
I, you know, that's
Right, thank you.
Yep. And it's not a problem, but it's just what your what your decision says, so we wouldn't do that.
Okay, thank you.
And the only thing, other thing I want to mention, if I could, Mr. Chair, quickly is, just as a reminder, the preliminary plan decisions, maybe you're gonna talk about those later. I don't know, but on the, on Quanapawat Parkway in North Ave, those decisions need to be filed with the town clerk by December 14th.
Okay.
I just didn't want that to slip through the crack.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on tonight's agenda will be our budget. Let me share. Okay. And Erin, Erin's still here. Excellent. This is in the past, Paul Revis, our former town planner, would make sure this budget is intact. He would present it to us in a December meeting, and as a board, we would vote to approve it, and it would just move forward. So there is a lot of information in here. Not too sure what all of it means, but I wanted as a board for us to to review it. Erin did talk to was it Walter today?
Kevin.
Kevin, sorry.
Yeah, took me a second. I'm still getting everyone's names down. Kevin Gills, the account, town accountant.
And just to review it to find out how it's all set up. So this is and Erin, please interrupt me at any time, but this first page, the town of Wakefield summary of expenditures of prior periods with estimates for the fiscal year of 2022. So you can see in here, actual for 2019, actual for 2020. And then funds appropriated for 2020, 2021 actual expenditures, and you could see moving forward. So we didn't spend much this year. And I believe everything is on budget to where we need to be. I don't know if any board members have any questions.
Yeah, I do. I haven't seen this before, so. The personal services, what does that mean?
Personal services, I believe, would be our clerk.
That's correct.
What about the contractual services?
Contractual services, good question. I don't know if there's any time that is billed to our planning board from other town offices or people. Matt, would you know with Matt or Bill, with your experience on the board, do you know what those would be? Or Erin, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I actually was just pulling up my email from him today, so if anyone does know, please step in, but I, yeah.
I I believe those are advertising fees, so when items that have to go be published, that's the contract, the contractual fees. And I know the materials and supplies were when the former town planner needed needed filing folders and things like that, he would charge that to the planning board's budget, so. Which is why it's, that is down, and why the contractual services is up, because we had a couple of big filings this year.
Right, for the zoning board of appeals. I'm sorry, the zoning bylaw.
Zoning changes in subdivisions, correct?
Yep.
Yes, I have it in front of me, too, that goes more line item. It's, there's a lot of advertising, yeah, printing, binding, postage, travel supplies, like you just mentioned, so those are kind of what those fall under.
Oh, that makes sense now. You could see this, that's what the next part is. Okay. So it breaks down the contractual services. Excellent.
But it says that we haven't spent anything this year. Is that right? Actual expenditures through week 26, like in the middle column there?
Right, so if you could see this, the advertising, actual expenditures for fiscal of the year 2020. We spent $4,010 on advertising, nothing on printing and binding, 46 on posting, so there's the total. That breaks down the con, the contractual.
Well, why is the middle column say zero if it says, it says actual expenditures through week 26?
Right here.
Yeah, and below both. That seems a little redundant with that other column.
Yeah, I'm not sure how.
I can, I can find out.
Yeah, I'm not sure how this is all. So it would be this column here.
Column G.
Versus column D, right.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to vote on this tonight, or when when does this need to be approved by?
I believe it needs to be approved by the end of this year, meaning December. We do have another meeting if we do to vote on this.
Could you send, send us a copy of this, so each member can review it and take a look at it?
Yes. Do we want to wait for Erin to get an answer, or I can send it this evening? Send recharges.
Yeah, since we're all just looking at it now for the first time, I think if we sent it out, people can take a look at it and
Yep, yeah, this is the first time I'm looking through it as well, like carefully.
Yes, any questions you have, I can follow up on with, I hope I said Kevin before, Kevin.
Yeah, it's Kevin. Yes.
I can follow up on any questions you may have.
Right, and I'll send the copy I have to the rest of the board after the meeting tonight.
So it looks like we were pretty significantly under the budget for the personal services this year, but we're budgeting the same amount next year? Is there a reason for that?
I think our personal services will stay the same.
Well, one of the things is we, we, we plan on having two meetings a month. And sometimes we don't. Like in the summer, we take off sometimes a few meetings, so that's where we almost always come up under. But I think it's budgeted to actually have two meetings a month.
Right.
That's why there's the set amount that reoccurs every, you know, it reoccurs every year unless that the amount that the clerk is getting paid goes up, so.
So it sounds like it's like a flat fee per meeting that the clerk gets. It's not based on the amount of time it actually takes the clerk.
True. And if we do have a special meeting, that triggers another flat fee.
Okay.
Good questions. Thank you. Any other questions on the budget? We will table this until we get an answer for the actual expenditure through week 26, that column. And I'll send this out after tonight's meeting to the rest of the board. And thank you, Erin, for following up with Kevin.
No problem.
Okay. Okay, items not anticipated by the chair. We already did the introduction with Erin. I was gonna say that now, but that that worked out well. And again, just to reiterate, it's worth watching the 10 minutes of last night's, watch the whole thing if you if you'd like, but the 10 minutes of Erin presenting her three weeks of absorbing what we do as a town and all the ideas that she has moving forward. Take a look. I wanted to add a couple of things to what we, what we're doing, so I just want to make sure I cover my checklist, and then we can open it up to any board members who have anything to share. To follow up on a couple of items, I did message the chair of the ZBA to let them know that we denied Zero Cherry Lane and Mr. Lou's option to file for his, for a variance before the two-year time limit. So that's something that I sent to via email. I also contacted town council, Tom Mullen through email, and we had a phone conversation to find the best path forward with the friends of Lake Quanapawat zoning bylaw article. And that meeting is tentatively scheduled for next Tuesday evening at seven. This is not a planning board meeting. It's the group getting together, and Attorney McGrath, I see you're still there. You'll be on the email list tomorrow for this. For the invite and the other attorneys that represent the owners of the properties at 50 Quanapawat, 200 Quanapawat, and along North Ave. We will two people from Friends of Lake Quanapawat, Bill Conley and Karen Fowler, and also Chris Cron of, I think it's 114 Main Street, will also be invited. As a planning board member, you're welcome to attend this, but we, it's not a planning board meeting on our agenda, so it won't be about discussing if you want to absorb, observe. But this is really for Mr. Mullen, town council, to work with the article and the attorneys and the Friends of Lake Quanapawat to get it to where it's in, not ambiguous and is worded in a way that is clear. So when it does come back to us at our January 12th meeting, that we can have that discussion and listen to the public and hopefully have a report for town, for the town council for our next town meeting in the spring. Just wanted to make sure I got that all clear. Sorry for taking so long to explain, but there's just a lot of little notes I have here that I wanted to make sure I touched on all of them. Does anybody have any comments or questions about that?
So how will we find out about that? Will that be posted on the planning board site?
Nope, but I'll I'll copy the planning board on the message, the email going out for the meeting.
Okay.
I'll have Sherry Dalton set up a Zoom meeting as we do for any meeting through the town. It goes through her. And I think this is in the right way. I think this is what the public was hoping for and the owners, attorneys really wanted for is to to make sure the wording of the article. So Tom Mullen has had a chance to look at it, and this was part of part of the comments, too. Just to be prepared for how do we make sure it falls in with the existing bylaws, doesn't contradict anything that's there already, and when it is written, it's clear enough that there's no conflicts with the existing bylaws.
So did the Friends of Lake Quanapawat, did they choose those people to go to that meeting?
No, it was in our, it was something we discussed during the public meeting on November 17th. That was 17th. Where who wants to attend, and it was the comments that, when Susan and I went through the notes, we picked out people that want, that said they wanted to attend, and I believe Attorney McGrath, Peter Tam, the other attorney for the town, the North Ave property. Sorry, I'm forgetting her name.
No.
Carla Moynihan.
Yes, thank you, Moynihan. And Bill Conley, Karen Fowler, and John, Chris Crun. Cron, I think it's Cron. I think that was right, Susan. I don't think we're missing anybody on that. Right, thank you.
How long is that scheduled? Is that scheduled for? How long do you think it'll be?
Not sure. It's gonna start at seven, and we'll see how long it goes. It's it's more of the discussion to get the wording correct. I don't know, maybe it could be 20 minutes. Could be a little bit longer. It's it's more about what they all agree on. So I know Chris Cron from our, from the previous meeting seems to think it's right in order, and there's nothing ambiguous about it. And I think Brian, Attorney McGrath, is also feeling that it's it's pretty solid the way it's written. This will just give town council a chance to look at it and make sure if this is good, then yep, he can bless it and we can move on. If it's not, and there are some things that need to be changed in the wording, to make sure if it's the number of units per acre versus the square footage and how that needs to be in there to cover both, then that's fine. And the other question that I hope comes up during that meeting is the MR1, MR2, and is that misleading in any way? Because as Attorney McGrath pointed out in the previous meeting, we don't have any zoning district for MR, multiple residents. We do have for multiple family, but not residence. So I wanted to make sure there's nothing in there that makes that confusing either. I mean, our goal as a board, and and Matt, please chime in, or Bill, you've been doing this for a while. If, when it gets to town meeting, we want it to be so clear and clean that people don't come up and say, hey, this is contradicting this part of the bylaw that already exists. How can it be written this way? And we want to avoid it being rewritten on the floor of town meeting. Sorry, this is besides that, how do we feel about the whole thing? Listening to the public, I mean, do we want to move forward with it? We still have the ability as a planning board to listen to the public and see if we do want to recommend favorable action or not. But in any way, we want to report to town council with how we feel as a board.
About the article?
About the article that will be wrapped up hopefully next Tuesday night in preparation for the January 12th meeting.
So Tom Mullen has time to kind of prep for that meeting then, right?
Well, he does, and I think it will be good to have this meeting on the 15th. That way when that gets back to the board, we can definitely be, we'll all be prepared for January 12th. Instead of doing it during another planning board meeting. And trying to figure it out.
So Joanne, what what the goal is here, that before this article is is submitted to be on the warrant for town meeting, that it's been all basically vetted and discussed. And any kinks worked out, unlike the last one, which was just submitted and there was no time for any changes before town meeting. We always know people are gonna have comments. We'd rather have people have those comments before. before submitted, so the applicant can make changes and modify the wording. So when it does go to town meeting, it's, we're we're voting it up or down. We're not trying to rewrite it at town meeting, which is what was gonna happen with that last article. So that's the goal here.
Right. So in terms of the process, once the article is written, assuming it's gonna be done after this meeting next week, then it would go back to the planning board and we would decide whether we're giving it the endorsement, favorable review or whatever.
Well, at our next meeting, if if there's an article that is substantially that the applicant believes they want to submit, if they if they want to submit it or not, to go to town meeting, then we can vote on it. If it's still not set, we don't have to vote on it at that point. So and just because we we vote to either favorably recommend or not favorably recommend, it doesn't mean it's even gonna show up at at town meeting. The applicant chooses not to submit it, then they they don't have to.
Okay.
So there's really no, there's no super deadline at this point. So.
I thought there was a deadline by sometime in January. I remember that you would mention that at one of the meetings, we had till a certain time in January to hold the public hearing.
No, at our last, at our meeting, we needed to set, we need to can, needed to continue our public hearing, and we need to continue it to a certain date. We just cannot continue it forever. So that's why I chose the first meeting in January to continue it to. At that point, we don't have to wrap it up. Then we can continue it to to another known date to have more discussion if we choose.
Okay. So the public might can, they can show up at this January meeting.
Oh, yeah, we we hope we have public input all the way through this. So more public input there is, the more it could be changed and tweaked, or if there's no public input and everyone's comfortable with it, then at that point, we can close the public hearing and the board can vote to either recommend or not recommend it. And at that point, then it's the applicant's responsibility to file it for the next town here, next town meeting.
So it's not really our decision on whether it goes to town meeting or not, it sounds like.
Nope, not at all.
Okay.
Well, there, not to correct that, but if we don't report back, any, if we don't have a report to Town Council, CIL Council, it won't appear on the town warrant.
That's correct, but we have no reason for us not to either recommend or not recommend it at this point.
We totally understand. Yep.
Wouldn't be doing our our duties here if we did that at this point. It's not like we're under a timeframe because we've got a deadline for town meeting. So.
Okay.
We did not recommend it, then is Town Council then deciding whether or not it goes on the warrant?
No, whether we recommend it or don't recommend it, as long as we put our report in to Town Council, the warrant can move forward. But as Matt said, it's still, the sponsor of the article still needs to push that warrant, that article onto the town warrant for town meeting.
Okay.
We don't do that part. It's up to them. Once that, once the sponsor and gets the signatures and everything, which they've already done, I don't know if they have to do that again. It's another town meeting, so maybe they do have to do that. I'm not sure, honestly. As long as, as long as they have everything in order, they can put it on the town warrant in front of the Town Council, and and then it goes to town meeting.
Okay.
All right. Another item I had too is I attended a meeting and Erin also attended the meeting, found out about the meeting that day. VHB did a short presentation with a couple of the town. I think Julie Smith Galvin was there and a few other people in town that are really interested interested in paths, cycle paths, bicycle paths along in Wakefield and how that traffic would move. So not just the downtown, but how do how do bicycles move through along around the lake and how is it safe and all the different updates that are, that will be starting soon for Albion Street. How does this all work? It was a great meeting to attend. There was a lot of good discussion, and I'm looking forward to going to the next meeting as well. So I don't know if anybody else is interested in that, but it's 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 part of what I'm really interested in Wakefield to help for safer bicycle paths and multimodal transportation throughout the city, whether it's walking or skateboarding or whatever it might be. But it's good to, good to know there's a little group that's meeting on a regular basis to discuss that.
It's not a city, Phil.
Did I say city? I'm sorry. That's my mald.
It is the town.
Agreed, understood.
So, Bill, are you going representing the planning board or just as a citizen or how, what what's? How how is this coming about?
I made it clear that I'm going as a citizen and not as the planning board chair. I did note that I'm a member of the planning board. But I just want to make sure that I share that back with the board, and it doesn't seem like I'm speaking for the board in any way. I don't know if that was your concern, Matt.
Well, I I'm just curious as to who was invited to these meetings, because I know there's a lot of goings on in town and and it's not always public knowledge of meetings coming up, things like that. So.
Understood. I heard about this one from the Town Council meeting. And I was listening to the Town Council meeting. I'm like, wait, there's a meeting next, whatever it was, next Thursday at this time. And I'm like, that's when I listened to the meeting and I kind of invited myself by sending a message to Julie Scott Galvin about it. And I copied Erin on it as well. Only because she's new and it would be good for her to see what else is going on. But you're right, Matt, there are a lot of other like meetings and whatever else going on that the arts, the ACE, there was another, if you watched the Town Council, not this one, the one before, Chris Carino from the Arts. What's the ACE? What's the acronym for ACE? Arts Cultural? I don't know what the E is for, sorry. Exchange?
Albion Cultural Exchange.
Yes, Albion Cultural. Oh, thank you, thank you. It's not arts. So Chris Carino presented to Town Council during the meeting what they're doing, the plans, and there were some really good questions regarding the handicap accessibility that the board, like the Town Council brought up. Why is it in the back? How come it's not in the front? So there was a lot of explanation. It was a good one.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting. The heard about Albion Street at that meeting. I watched the recording. I wasn't there live, but.
Same here, recording. Well, the VHB, the sorry, it's getting late. What's that whole plan? It's, we've been working on it for about two or three years. We've had a lot of focus groups.
Vision Wakefield.
Yes, yep. And public meetings at the Americal Center. When we could have big public meetings where they would produce the plans and it would just be a public forum. These were really good. I was invited as a planning board member to attend the focus groups, and I believe Matt was too, but it was, they were at like ten o'clock noon on Tuesdays. So it wasn't always practical for us to attend.
Yeah, I went to a lot of the envisioned meetings too, the ones that were at night, like at seven PM.
Yep. Yeah, those like at the Americal Center, and there might have been one at the high school at one point. I can't remember.
Yeah, I think there, yeah, there was one at Galvin, I think, and then there's. But I I think there'll still be a lot of people that haven't heard is in terms of how it's moving forward. Because it seemed to jump pretty fast from like the planning idea, gather input stage to, okay, now this is what we're doing.
Yeah, well, if I remember correctly, VHB actually presented it out and allowed the public that was in attendance to choose which option as they went through each option of how Main Street and Albion Street would be laid out.
How long ago was that?
About a year ago, I would say. Does that sound right, Matt? Was it about a year ago?
For Albion Street, I truly, I, again, I'm, I don't know either. That kind of just happened too. I didn't, I know in the envision, there was a lot more input for the Main Street corridor, but the Albion Street corridor was just was, you know, here's what we have, and that's it. So.
And I I'm not certain because I'm so new, but I do believe why they're moving forward with Albion. You probably, you might know this is because of the Complete Streets program and the funding they got for that. So that's kind of why that part is moving forward.
That's true. And Ed Dombrowski, Town Council, he he's been leading that up. So if you do have questions, it's worth actually contacting him through his email on the town page. We got that. The last thing that I have under Things Not Anticipated is, it's been awesome working with Jen McDonald with the website. You could see as this has been, this was updated recently, contact the planning board chair at, that way there's no confusing, and that was confusion, and that was something Matt brought up as a point that people could be emailing, sending to this email address. You can all see this, correct? Okay. That if you clicked on this to go to the email address, you would think you were sending something to the whole planning board, when it really just goes to one email address that we've had access to since, I think, about September. So that's really nice. This link that goes to the Town Planner webpage now goes to the Community Economic Development, which we discussed already. As far as sending the projects up here, and Matt, this is something you brought up in the last meeting, and I want to make sure that I understood it correctly to communicate to to Jen to have it up here. Now that we've endorsed the A and R plan, that should go up here, correct?
Not necessarily, because it'll, it'll show up on on the registry website. So we we could put it up there if we wanted, but in that case, we're not really reviewing these. We don't have a choice. We were statutorily, we have to endorse it if it meets, so we can put it up there if we want, but it's not really necessary.
Well, I wanted to make sure that, and this was a question that Susan and I had, it's like we didn't want the A and R plan, once it comes in from whoever to go up to the website. That's not what we want. We, I just want to understand, when should it go up? And if it's not when we endorse the A and R, should it be when we accept a preliminary plan?
So, yeah, plans that that we have, you know, review power over, they should be up there, things that go multi-meetings.
Right, no A and R.
A and Rs, you know, they're presented, technically, they can be be presented at our meeting, but we choose to have it on our agenda first.
Right.
So.
The preliminary subdivision plan would go up there.
If, yeah.
Right.
Once we accepted it, we put it up there because we want input from the public.
Right. And we would want to keep the preliminary subdivision plan up there and then add the definitive plan if that was something that was we were reviewing. That way, we could go back, or a town could go back and look at the preliminary plan as well.
Well, yes, I mean, we don't know, we we don't, do not know if there's a a date certain that this is gonna go from preliminary to subdivision.
Right. I'm just using this as an example, but the plans that we would want to see up there, we would not want to see an A and R, but we would want to see a preliminary subdivision plan or definitive subdivision plan that we were taken under review as a board.
Correct.
Okay.
So like, like, these preliminary plans, I would leave them up for, you know, a while and then take them down because eventually, and this is what I look for when I look at our website, when I see Tom, see the Town Planner's website, when there is no Town Planner, it just looks like it's not really being maintained. So at some point, I would think we would take these down because we're done reviewing them and it's, we've moved on from it.
Okay.
Yeah, for the Town Planner section, I mean, maybe that should be changed somehow to indicate there's no Town Planner and renamed somehow.
Right, that that acronym that Erin has, there are, just, we could just change this, please see the economic. Yeah, that, this one.
I think that's something I can talk to Steve about too, because I think there, I mean, I am doing a lot of projects that Paul would have done. And I can get into more detail about this another time, but there might be another way we can go about doing this where it's not Town Planner, but I think people automatically think, you know, town planning and having those certain things there over community and economic development. So maybe we should talk through that more, but I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe Town Plan instead of Town Planner. You know, if it's stuff about town plans, but if it, if it gives you the impression we have a Town Planner and we don't.
I also think maybe the idea of maybe, and I'm not creating it, but Planning Department or Planning and Economic Development, you know, so the word planning still cut, you know, clear, might be something to think about.
Okay. Good conversation. Erin, you can add that to your list of things to talk to Steve. Thank you. Another option came up, and I know Matt, again, some concern about emails, and this has come up before. I brought this up with Steve Mayo in a meeting with Erin and Steve a week and a half ago. And he was surprised that each of us do not have an existing town email. He was like, you mean, you all get emails on your personal email? He was like, no, 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 that's not how it should be. So what Steve wants us to have, and I, and I agree, what we should discuss as a board, each of us would have our own town email address. And that would be something you can check or not check. This should be better because it's not tied to your personal email address. Like, right now, I'm bombarded on my personal email address. I think there was maybe thirty-five emails today just from planning board stuff on my personal email address. And then I checked the planning board email, and there is about six or seven. It's just way too much to take care of. And what it would end up looking like would be where's the town? That's Town Council.
You gotta go to boards and committees.
Is it under there?
Yeah.
Yep, there we go. Thank you. And you can see how this is listed where each person has their counselor dot Denaco, Dombrowski, and so on. I think they would be typical town email addresses, like Susan's email is S, her first initial, last name at Wakefield. Does anybody have any comments or concerns or questions about this?
Yeah, I do. I I think it's a, I think it's a great idea as long as it's easy for us to get in and check the email on a regular basis. And respond to the email. So as long as it's easy for us to use and it works, I think it's good.
I think of it as another app on my phone. So where I have my Microsoft Outlook or whatever it might be, or I click on mail on my phone, like I have my Gmail account, I have my AOL account from nineteen ninety-five and my work, my Bergmeyer account. So I think I would just add another one. It would be my Wakefield Town account.
Well, how do you access that through Outlook or you would?
If it's Exchange, then it would be through Exchange. If it's through another app, then it's through another app, but it's all, if it's through your iPhone, it's just another part of your mail system on your phone.
I'm sure IT could help to get whatever, whatever you need to get set up as well. But yeah, I think that, what you were, sorry, I had to get my charger. I think that would be nice for you guys to have your own, like, work, work email that might help streamline some things as well for you. So.
Matt, Bill, Megan, any comments?
I I agree. I've been kind of pushing this for for a while. So yes, that would be good.
I thought you'd be so excited about it, Matt. It's great to see.
Over the moon about it.
Now, another email address. Now another email address.
Yeah. No, another mail account. That's what I need. So.
Yeah.
Your personal.
But yes, it's, it's better than, than, than coming to my personal email account. So.
Right. Megan and Bill, are you, are you okay with this?
Yeah, it's fine, fine for me.
Does the, um, the town have an?
And that's fine for me too.
Sorry, Joan, go ahead.
Is there any app for the, um, the town, like the website that you could use?
Not sure. Erin or Susan might know.
I have, so I have a personal work, uh, or not personal, a work computer that I bring home and I have my Outlook set up, but I am able to just check my email online, um, work email online through like my phone or my personal, um, computer. So like that. So.
So it's Outlook, it's.
Yeah, it's really easy.
Right, this is the.
It's really easy if you don't have multiple Outlook accounts.
Um, I have multiple Outlook accounts and I keep them separate. So I have them as tabs on my browser. So I can go to my Bergmeyer work email. I can go to a planning board email. I can go to my, I have three Outlook accounts.
Okay.
Right. And I believe when you do go into it, we don't have to go like no, you'll get this option. I can go, I'm an adjunct at Suffolk University. I have my Bergmeyer work account and then, oh, the planning board one doesn't show up here. Okay. I have that under a separate tab because I have had some troubles and paying at, um, Town IT helped a lot.
And if you don't want to have another like on your Outlook, you can just visit that. They give you the link and you can just visit that when you'd like.
Right. All right. Well, I'm glad we got through all that because that's all what I had for, um, other items not anticipated. And it was important to talk about the email, the plan review information and how the website is changing. And Jen's been so responsive. She like changes things that day when I ask. So, and there's really no issues with putting plans. She just wants to know what PDFs we want up there. That's all. So it's, it's pretty easy to take care of. Any comments from our items that we didn't anticipate to be on our agenda by anybody else?
Well, yeah, we've got these, um, approvals for the preliminary plans.
Yes.
Attorney McGrath is, is expecting us to have signed. We have not, as far as I know, done these before on any preliminary club subdivision. So this is something new. Uh, I, I looked through it. It, it doesn't really bother me too much, but it, it's just something that we've never done before. So I'm kind of curious as to why this is, uh, is being asked for at this point. So.
Five hundred Main Street?
No, this would be for fifty Quanapawet Parkway, two hundred Quanapawet Parkway and the five hundreds of North. This was from the November seventeenth meeting where we approved the preliminary subdivision plans.
Right, we voted on the subdivision plans. So he's saying we don't usually do that?
No, we usually do that part, but I don't remember, and maybe this is what Matt's talking about. I don't remember having to do like a signed report that goes to the town clerk.
Or preliminary subdivision.
Right. You think that's something that Paul Reviss used to take care of?
Well, someone from the planning board would have to sign off on it and I, I don't believe anyone has.
I haven't.
So, I, like, like I had mentioned, normally, um, we don't even vote on preliminary plans. We just, you know, basically advise. And had, we had a policy that we just did not, you know, approve or deny it. We just took it in and accepted it.
Accepted the plan and moved on. Right.
Yes.
That's, that's why I was.
We were sort of forced to, uh, to vote on it.
Roll call vote.
Yeah. And, and now, uh, this document wants us to memorialize that vote. So instead of just being in our minutes. So I don't know, we can check on if this is, uh, necessary or not, but, um, it is out of the ordinary. I'm just pointing that.
All right. I'll send an email to Mr. Mullen tomorrow and ask in so many words, if this is something that we should be doing as a board. Maybe it's something we shouldn't be doing.
All right. So on, on that note, uh, it may be premature, but I'm going to make a motion that if you get word from Town Council that this is appropriate, that I'm going to make a motion that the chairman sign these on behalf of the board.
At the chair, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. I think that's fine. So if, just to be clear, if tomorrow when I speak with Tom Mullen, Town Council, and he's like, yes, this is something that is, something that you should have been doing as a board in the past, but because of the importance to the owners and the attorneys for this, they want this done this way, that we should do it. I'll have signing power for the board for this. Okay, I just, I'm, I'm not trying to re, reword what you said, but I want to make sure the motion's understood.
I, I don't understand it. So the, um, the Quanapawet stuff, we voted on the preliminary subdivision plans at the last meeting?
Yes.
And they were in the meeting minutes, all the votes on those three?
Yes.
So are you saying that we don't usually do that?
Not on a preliminary subdivision plan.
We don't vote on whether to accept it or not?
We vote to accept, but not to approve.
Oh, okay.
We usually listen to it. There's ideas exchanged. It goes on, it goes away. If it comes back, a lot of times it comes back as a definitive subdivision plan where it's very specific and we like count trees. And then that gets approved and moved on to town on hearing and everything else. But for the bill, I guess the bigger part of this is building inspector for inspectional services to review this, they would end up, it, it goes from the definitive subdivision plan to the permit set for inspectional services to review. We don't have any part in that, but we haven't as a board, since I've been on the board, approved preliminary subdivision plans with a vote.
Okay. So I guess we're questioning what the process is, but on that, we were voting to accept the subdivision plan, which would happen before the approval of the plan. So which part is the motion about the approval or the acceptance?
No, this motion is just giving me as the planning board chair power to sign for the entire board. So if this is going through, I can go to Attorney McGrath's office and sign them.
So we've already, we've already voted on these.
Right.
I, it was a split vote that, um, certain members voted no and others voted yes. And one of them, I believe we all voted, uh, in the affirmative.
Right, for North Ave.
Uh, yeah. So normally, like I said, we don't do that at all. So that's one thing. And as far as I can recall, never have we got a a letter that needs to be signed and then filed at the town clerk's office. So that's, that's what I'm questioning, whether this is appropriate, that this even needs to be done and we should be signing it, or if we may be setting a precedent or something that we shouldn't be doing.
Right.
So, uh, just in the interest of time, if Tom Mullen has no problem with us doing it and it's not going to set a precedent and it's not going to be an issue down the road, I am recommending that the chair sign these on behalf of the board. I believe they're set up that way anyways. Uh, yeah, they're set up that the, the, it's duly authorized. By, by duly authorized chairman, William Spalding, he would be signing it. So I'm just making sure that the entire board is, is backing the, the chair when he does this. That's all.
Well, he's doing it based on the vote though, right?
Correct. Yeah, he's not changing our vote at all.
No.
My point is we've never done this before. Should we be doing it?
And I'll speak with Town Council tomorrow.
That's two separate things. One, should we be doing it? And, and two, should he sign off?
Well, once I speak with Mr. Mullen tomorrow, I'll find out if it's something we should sign and if he says move forward with it and that's proposing that I have the power to sign for all of us. And if Mr. Mullen says no, we don't need to do that. We won't.
So I mean, if it's a one-off and it's not setting a precedent, we're not going to do it all the time, then when do we do it and when are we not doing it?
I'll ask Mr. Mullen that as well. If it's something we do not have to do, we'll move forward with not approving preliminary subdivision plans in the future. If it's something that we should have been doing all along and we just weren't, didn't do it, then it's something we will continue to do.
I think it's a good thing to do.
If our, if our votes are counted and it, these preliminary subdivision plans, really us accepting them becomes the important part. Especially in this case where it locks in existing zoning bylaws for three years. The approval of them really just allows this, the team, the owner's team to move forward to the definitive subdivision plan. If they choose to, they don't have to do anything.
But it, it, it's not even the approval of it. Once we accepted it, that is what locked in the zoning.
Yep.
Not us voting on it either way. So us voting up or down on it had absolutely no bearing on the process that had already been started by them filing these plans. So the way I feel is, is there was no reason for us to even vote on them to approve or, or, or not approve them. And I don't see a reason for us to sign this document that we did that. So that's my point.
Yep. And that's, I'll ask Mr. Mullen about the point of order for all that. Okay.
Yeah, because it sounds like from what you just said, Matt, like the acceptance and the approval is the same thing.
No, the, the approval means nothing. We could have, we could have all rejected it and it would not have changed a thing.
But the acceptance means something or an unacceptance?
As a board, if we accept the preliminary subdivision plan, that's what triggers project to be locked in or the property to be locked into the existing zoning bylaws for three years from that acceptance.
Right, but it wasn't, one of them wasn't accepted. So what does that mean?
Three were accepted.
Well.
I mean, all three were accepted.
Let me, let me, let me revise it. We did not accept the plans. They were filed. So by us viewing them, which we basically had to do, because again, statutorily, the board has to do certain things. So if an applicant files a preliminary plan, we have to review it. That's part of our job. Just with the act of them submitting the plan, that's all they needed to do to free zoning. So they have done that. So acceptance of favorably approving it, not favorably approving it, doesn't matter at that point. It's, it, they're, what they were looking for the, for the, for the process was they needed to file that plan. They did. Once they filed that plan, even if we never even saw them, it started the clock of zoning, of freezing the zoning.
So I guess the question is, why did we vote then?
Exactly. Which is, which was my point that I didn't, I said, I don't think we should vote on it at all, but we were basically, we were told we had to vote, which I did not believe, but I voted in two cases to not approve them anyways. So.
All right. Were there any other, um, items not anticipated that anyone wants to bring up?
Well, um, I still think there's a motion out there that needs a second and a vote unless
They do want to.
It wants the second or I'm fine with that too.
Just want to repeat the motion just for the record.
I'll make a motion that if, uh, after review with the Town Council, he does not see an issue with the chairman uh, signing these that the, the chair, the board authorizes the chair to sign these.
Second it.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So four in favor. One not voted. Okay. Um, any other items?
Yeah, I have one other, I mean, um, Susan, thank you for dropping off the, um, the plans for the ZBA review. I have an issue with one of them that first of all, the plans are so small that I can't see them.
I, yeah. Okay. I know which one you're talking about.
For the ten Otis, I, I'm looking at this plan, what they're proposing. They're, they're tearing down a house and I, I believe it's a carriage house behind, as far as I can tell. I've been trying to look online for that. Uh, and they're proposing a duplex. So yeah, it's a barn that they're tearing down. They're putting a duplex in that as far as I can tell, would only have two legal parking spaces, one for each unit. So, um, I don't think this is, uh, appropriate, appropriately scaled, uh, development here that is going to be reviewed by the ZBA. And what I have seen before, and, and I know what's going to happen is they're going to say, we can put two cars in there and two of the cars are going to hang out over the parking, over the sidewalk. So since I can't read this to see if there's enough room there, I'm going to say that this plan does not have enough parking and the ZBA should reject it. I know in the past we've, these are put out for comment by multiple boards. We've made comments and they've been basically
Right.
ignored. So I'm just putting that out there that, um, I think this is not something that should be approved. It's a tight area up there. There's already been issues with parking and putting in another unit without parking is not good planning.
Um, I, yeah, I looked at that too pretty closely. Then I actually went up there and drove by the location. And, um, yeah, you, like you said, there's a big house and then there's a barn. And the big house that's there is really close to the street. And there's a big, long driveway there now. And then when you look at the new plan, the two family takes up like most of the lot. Um, so the driveway that's there now would be taken up by the new two family and the parking is like right in the middle of the house. So I couldn't really tell how many cars that would hold. Um, I didn't, I didn't look at like the dimensions of that driveway, but I thought it's like right in the middle of the property and depending on how close it is to the street. Yeah, it's kind of an important area where it's right across from the Lincoln School, I think it is.
I know I had it, I had it. I don't know if you guys can see it, but I pulled it up under Zillow. It's just the easiest way for me to jump into it. But you can see, you all seeing this? You all seeing this with the driveway down to the barn?
Right, so there's a lot of parking now that they're gonna, they're gonna take away.
It's hard too with the plans developed with a duplex, right? Okay, Matt, would you, um, do you want me to draft something up and quickly have in front of our board and then send it to the ZBA?
Well, when is this getting filed? Let me take a look.
Is it tomorrow?
Our inputs requested the prior to December sixteenth, so. We have a week to draft a. A response, not that. Again, we're not that much, but I think in this case, uh. This is just poor planning and should be rejected out of hand. I, I hope that, um, the ZBA would, uh. Would do, you know, would look at that. So one of my, what I'm, one of the issues I have here is that we're, we're sent plans that we can barely review. This is clearly something that should be online, that does not have to have someone drive around and drop them off in our mailbox.
Right, I agree.
And, uh. So that's my comment there. So yeah, I, I think it would be nice, you know, if the rest of the board goes along with it. I think we should draft some kind of response that. At least I feel like this is, uh. Does not meet the requirements. I don't know if they're looking for zoning relief for parking, but they shouldn't. I don't know any house lot in Wakefield that has enough parking at this point, so.
Right.
Um, in terms of, my other concern with that would be that the house basically fills up the whole lot. You know, like in terms of scalability, usually, at least in the old days. You had a lot and you had some land, you didn't fill all the land with the building.
Right, well, that's up to the landowner and just being within the setbacks. If they're asking for a variance for a setback, that's different.
Well, what are they asking for then?
I don't believe they were asking for any variances for setbacks. And then I don't have it right in front of me.
I'll go get it, I know.
I don't think there was a variance for a setback.
It talks about, it says there. Um, the things they want to consider are convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to streets. Properties and or improvements and adequacy of the methods of disposal for sewage refuse. And other wastes and the methods for surface and stormwater drainage. And provisions for off-street parking and loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the servicing of the buildings and related uses on the lot. So it sounds like there's a few things.
It's, it's a non-conforming lot that they're, they're trying to build, that's what it is, so.
Right, it's not big enough.
So again, I, I can't read the, the area, but it looks like it is, uh. I, again, I can't even read this plan, it's too small.
When you say it's non-conforming law, you mean it, it doesn't meet a certain square footage requirement?
That's, that's what they're going for, why they're going to the ZBA, they need, is, is an issue with it that needs to be reviewed by the ZBA. And that's it, is that it's, the lot is, uh, basically too small. And to me, they're putting too big of a house on a too small a lot, so.
I agree, I agree.
All right, I'll draft something up and share it with everybody and if, um. If there's any comments or changes that need to be made to it, they could be made directly to me. And once we come up with a final draft. I would like to get it done in the next two days or so, um, we can send it over to the ZBA.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt. Any other items that weren't anticipated on our agenda? Okay, well, thanks. This was, this was a good meeting. This was, felt like it was back to a normal meeting in some ways. Unfortunately, that means just us and a few other people, not sixty or seventy or eighty people. But, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, I will make that motion, but first I'll say, Erin, it's nice to meet you. Hopefully, uh, we can all meet in real life someday when things are back to normal, so.
I know, that would be very nice, wouldn't it? And I thank you so much for being so welcoming, um, you know, I do have a good amount to learn, but you know, I'm here for you guys if you need anything, so just feel free to reach out.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. So I, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Megan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Meeting adjourned.
Have a great night.
Good night.
You too.
Good night.